Any advances? Would you have any comments?
Yeah, I just need to make two advances. One is the airport grant for eighty-nine thousand dollars. This covers monies that have not come in yet on the grant and our outstanding purchase orders on that grant. And then also twenty-six hundred dollars for the victims of crime act. That number will be smaller on that one because I did just receive an electronic deposit yesterday.
Yeah, wait, yeah.
Well, and that's why I said these amounts may be reduced.
Yeah, okay.
You know, if funds are received before year end. So, and I'm hoping that some of the airport grant money will come too because we fixed some loose ends on that in the past week. So, it may not be that much, but can't guarantee it, so I have to have the higher number than anything else.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Any discussion? Motion to approve those two advances. Would you remember if I were second by Mr. Sack, all pay her?
No.
Aye, motion passed. Nothing else for the county order, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Mr. Sacks, I'd like a motion to adjourn at six thirty-two.
This goes in here. Dan? Dan? Goes in here.
Hold, hold there. Where are you going to get it? How do you get it?
Oh, that is interesting. Oh, yeah.
The special finding committee was called by Sheriff Monica Sack, Monica Keever, William O'Rourke, and Steve Piper to discuss ODOT savings in state route ninety-eight. The matter was referred to the committee by Mayor Jeff Research. Number one, ODOT saving in state route ninety-eight.
When I chased down you, they could find out what happened. In two thousand and fifteen, we passed Resolution two sixteen dash twenty fifteen, and in that resolution, we authorized the expenditure of nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for construction costs and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for construction engineering. And this was just a preliminary. They imported me today when I talked with them. And what we need to do now is we need to repeal this one and put in place what they could say is the final one. And the final one has a cost of eight hundred and forty thousand dollars for the contract and twenty-four thousand eight thirty-two seventy-four for the ODOT engineering amount. So, it's down from the nine forty one, is that the nine forty-one, to eight sixty-five.
Did you read, did you read the thing? Eight forty?
Which one, which figures do you want?
Eight hundred and forty now, what about?
Eight hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-six cents for the contract amount. And then ODOT engineering amount is twenty-four thousand eight thirty-two point seventy-four. Now, those numbers could still change because they're going for bid on January the twenty-fifth. Thank heavens, it only took, we started this in twenty fifteen, didn't we? They're going for bid on January the twenty-fifth, and we have to have the resolution and the paperwork to them by January the fourth. I got Joyce on the phone with them today. She was not happy, Amber.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can make the fourth.
Yeah. So, we're going to see how we can come with having it all to them by the fourth so we can get in on that first bid that they're going out for in January, on January the twenty-fifth. So, that's what we're looking for then, is we're looking for legislation to repeal Resolution two sixteen dash twenty fifteen. And then in its place, we're going to put in a final resolution to be made. I don't know what the number will be. It'll be after the first of the year, so it'll be a twenty eighteen, the two-hundred probably, twenty eighteen will be the resolution.
I love the way they make us wait for two years, but then they want everything done and a check yesterday.
Yeah.
They give them.
Yeah, three days, and you gotta have it, yeah.
And, of course, you know, they run July one to June thirty, so they don't, they're not concerned with what we have, they're just going to close out our year.
Yeah.
They put side walls in on both sides?
Yes. Sure, yes. Because we're ready to have a uniform look down there, my understanding is, oh, let's see if I can go back that far. I thought it was five, five-foot treelons and sidewalks.
Sidewalks four.
I mean?
Sidewalks four foot of.
Yeah, but the treelons five foot.
So, nine feet long.
Yeah. Because we've already got all of the.
Right, and on one side of the street, that won't be an issue, but the other side of the street, there's not that much room.
Well, then, they'll probably will adjust it.
Right, that's why, that's why I was wondering about if they do a roadside in the street.
But, I guess they've been moving all of those.
Broadway approaches and the trees are gone.
Yeah, those are all going to have to be fixed. And, but, I mean, they've been moving the telephone poles and getting rid of the, they've already taken the trees down, and that was all, because that was all supposed to happen in sixteen. So, we need a request for legislation for this, the final resolution for this project.
I will make a motion. Set.
Steve made a motion to request legislative, legislation to repeal Resolution two sixteen dash two thousand and fifteen and put in place, will it be Resolution two?
I, we can, don't state the number, just a new resolution.
And put in place the new.
With the new totals. Okay.
Okay, Bill's second, all in favor? Aye.
Okay. It pass?
Yes. Motion pass. So, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Right.
Motion pass by ways, oh, all in favor? Aye. Motion pass by ways both. We adjourn the meeting at six thirty-five P.M.
Forty-seven. We're going to discuss the sewer rates. Did you? Did you come? Yeah? Still waiting. Now, you want to go away, Mark?
Okay, so, you can't film tonight. Oh, I have a meeting.
Service paid to discuss the sewer rate.
Okay, attached to is a single shaded paper here. To Dan? Yeah. Let's see.
We're just discussing, since we're doing a forum, so.
Yeah, we're just discussing, correct. This says, as part of the funding application with the O E P A, we submitted the attached Visarus Council sewer rate ordinance number forty-seven dash two thousand and seventeen, passed in October two thousand and seventeen. This ordinance shows a planned ten percent sewer rate increase for one-one-eighteen that the O E P A has the understanding that will be passed, and it was. In addition, we calculated the projection of revenue schedule that was based on two thousand and seventeen revenues, including the three percent from August of two thousand and seventeen, that also included this ten percent sewer rate increase for two thousand and eighteen to be done in January of two thousand and eighteen. This projection of revenue schedule was then signed by you. This is addressed to the mayor. Recently, the O E P A with these understandings approved the zero percent planning loan on December the seventh, two thousand and eighteen. I would not, I would recommend not to deviate from this schedule. Schedule ten percent sewer rate increase for January of eighteen since we have advised the O E P A previously, and especially since the city desires to obtain their remaining zero percent funding for the remaining approved sewer construction funds of four point one million dollars. Also, the city has scheduled a three percent sewer rate increase for August of two thousand and eighteen per this attached ordinance, which could be waived. The city council has the option to then either pass this three percent increase or not, to pass this increase for August of two thousand and eighteen, especially since the ten percent was passed in January of two thousand and eighteen. It seems consistent with the O E P A perspective to delay or postpone the future three percent increase scheduled for October two thousand and eighteen rather than doing seven percent in January two thousand and eighteen, which conflicts with the attached rate ordinance. Obtaining the full ten percent in January of two thousand and eighteen will have the effect of a lower sewer rate increase in the future with the expected earlier increased sewer revenues. So, if ten percent was the number that they recommended, and we again look at this for the, we have the August one that we have scheduled, there's a three percent one scheduled in August, if everything is coming in as planned, that one doesn't have to be done then.
All right, well, no, because originally, it wasn't ten percent, it was seven percent for the same guy that sent this email. And then, second, your three percent increase that's coming up in August is not part of the legislation that we just passed, that's a piece of legislation that got passed years ago, and it's automatic.
Yes.
So, the council doesn't get to vote on that three percent increase, it's automatic.
I would say refer back and amend it.
Yeah, we can refer back and amend it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we can refer back and amend it. And Steve, as I remember this, this discussion, this, the discussion was, did it need to be ten percent or did it need to be thirteen percent?
No.
Because there was, let me, I finish, please?
Go ahead.
Was, because we already had three percent scheduled.
Right.
So, the question was, should it be ten or should it be thirteen? And ten percent is what we've signed all the paperwork for.
Right. And again, on September twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, the question from Dan Schaefer, the same guy that sent this email, I understand it can pass a three percent sewer increase in August, we need ten percent for January first, two thousand and eighteen. All we need is a seven percent piece in addition to be passed by October sixth, two thousand and seventeen, effective no later than January first, two thousand and eighteen. The two pieces rather than ten at one time, since you already passed the three. And also, everything that we've calculated, all the budget on, is on three million dollars, and now it's went to four point one. So, what he says in this email, that the city desires to obtain the remaining zero percent funding for the remaining approved sewer construction funds of four point one, I don't ever once remember us discussing going from three million to four point one, not one time.
The original quote that we got was three or four million dollars. And when the administration got that, their comment was that you usually get the lesser amount, so that's what we went with, was the three million dollars. We don't have to take the extra million dollars. I mean, that's our option, just because we've been approved for it, doesn't mean we have to take it and use it.
I agree. However, at zero percent, you know, you're somewhat forced not to, but in fact, it's not granted, you still have to pay it back.
Right.
I think the last meeting that the mayor, Davis, was kept for a little bit.
No, we have to. For Bruce Brans, because I had to. Because they.
Said four, yeah.
Wait a minute, where'd that come from?
Now, four million isn't budgeted in eighteen.
Right.
The projects that we have are right around.
Two point eight.
Two point eight or something like that.
Two point eight, something like that, so.
Because that's going to be an ongoing down road if we use the other, the rest of them.
All right. Well, question number two, in regards to bill. If we read ordinance forty-seven, two thousand and seventeen. Yeah. Down in section B under nine twenty-five point oh-three, where it says, except as here and after otherwise provided, total sewer charges shall be based upon Buffalo stormwater separation fee plus the usage rate provided in section C based upon the amount of water consumed upon such premises measured as here and after provided in the section. Okay, so I go back to the law bills from my dad's shop, where we clearly have the usage of one, but not billed for two. What it clearly says in the ordinance, that your sewer rate is based on your water consumption, not how much you bill for. So, when I call him tonight, when should I tell him that his rebate check will be available?
I don't have any control over that, Steve. I'm telling you, it's been that way ever since.
Oh, but I'm telling you, it's wrong.
Okay, well, I'm telling you that this has been in effect because we do not charge for a consumption of one for water. It's always been a consumption of two is the minimum that we do.
And I don't have an issue with that.
And then the sewer went right along with it, it's always been that.
No, 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 your sewer is based on your water consumption, stuff like you go for.
Steve, I know what you're reading, I am telling you what's happened.
And I'm telling you, it's wrong.
Okay, then we need to discuss it, if it's wrong, but we're not going to solve it this evening.
I agree. But, solving the issue isn't changing the ordinance, so that reflects how we bill for the water, because that doesn't change the fact it's been over billed for thirty-five years, and him and everybody else who managed to get a consumption of one. So, when do they get their money back?
Not my question to answer.
All right.
We don't have the law directors not with us this evening, so we'll have to take it up with him to see what he says.
That's fine.
Okay.
Or put back service head first here?
Someone still want to debate?
Well, I mean.
That'll still be good.
Still being debated, you know, here.
Hey, any comments? Any comments?
No.
Should we go with that one that says, don't do the three percent August work?
No, we just let, let's stay in service, and then have first year they can address it. It's still in committee there. We may have known what, what the supposed problem is.
Maybe a better way to do it?
Okay, well, we're going to adjourn six fifty-seven on the discussion, Special Service.
The regular meeting for Visarus City Council for December the nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Vote call, please.
McKieber.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Wireball.
Trucco.
Sack.
Here.
O'Rourke.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the December fifth, two thousand and seventeen regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
Aye.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Piper, second by the Sack, to accept the minutes from December the fifth, two thousand and seventeen meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Anyone who would like to address council this evening, please go to the podiums, state your name and your address, please.
Vicki Deshawn, eleven oh eight, Bill Crest Drive. I have the following comments on the council meeting minutes that were just accepted by council, in particular with paragraph three under visitors on page one of five. First off, I did not ask that council consider my request. I in fact asked that council planned to address my public records request. I did not refer to the memo as confidential. I did not state the memo was sent to council the week of October the ninth, two thousand and seventeen. I in fact stated that Law Director Ratliff stated to me he issued a copy of the memo to Council President Love the week of October the ninth, two thousand and seventeen. I did not state ordinance number thirty-two dash two thousand and seventeen. I in fact stated ordinance number forty-two dash two thousand and seventeen. In addition to stating that the memo was concerning ordinance number forty-two dash two thousand and seventeen, which established the victim crime advocate funds for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, I also stated that the memo concerned the finance committee meeting minutes for September the seventh, two thousand and seventeen. And finally, in response to my asking, if I could be given a copy of the memo after the council meeting, President Love did not respond with, the memo would be emailed to me the following day, but in fact said, we can have it for you first thing in the morning. And I think it's important, and this is just a little sign note, that the next day, I in fact received an email at eleven fifty-seven A.M. with only two pages of the four-page memo. And it wasn't until one thirteen P.M. that day that I received all four pages of the memo.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council this evening? No communications or petitions? Standing committee reports, the Visarus City Council, okay. We start this off here, Mr. O'Rourke. The minutes for December the sixth.
Special Finance Committee was called, met on Wednesday, December sixth, called order at eight thirty-one P.M. Members present were Steve Piper, Dan Warboll, Bill O'Rourke Chair, members of the committee were Steve Piper, Dan Warboll, Monica Sack, Bill O'Rourke. Item one, Special Finance Committee meeting was called by Finance Chair O'Rourke and Finance Committee Dan Warboll and Steve Piper to discuss two thousand and eighteen budget. Meeting was called over by O'Rourke at eight thirty-one. Item two, two thousand and eighteen budget. We discuss budget priorities for two thousand and eighteen in the following areas. A, Special State Director F. Wagner details spending cuts from earlier version of the budget in several departments. B, repairs to Almella Park Pool. We discuss the voluntary participation of repairs to the pool and other items on Almella Park, if a justification is required. C, Truce to the USA, the committee removed the item from consideration of the two thousand and eighteen budget. D, the bike cap grant, committee removed the item from consideration of the two thousand and eighteen budget. E, Carver County Partnership for Education Economic Development Contract, committee kept the item under consideration for two thousand and eighteen budget. F, solid waste. Honorable George Schiffer noted that solid waste fund is well short and suggested an ill-weight balancing out would be a rate increase going forward. Last increase was in two thousand and seven. Mr. Warboll made a motion to adjourn the meeting, and second by Mr. Piper, motion passed by voice vote. Work returned at eleven nineteen A.M.
Question or comments for Mr. O'Rourke? None? Okay, who's being on? The joint regular committees on Thursday, December the seventh, we start with, who did we start with? Mr. Piper?
Short story again, all right. Visarus City Council Joint Regular Committees met Thursday, December seventh, two thousand and seventeen, at six P.M. Members present were Monica Keever, Dan Ross, Dan Warboll, Monica Sack, Bill O'Rourke, and myself. There was no private participation. All of the community business was held in safety. At six oh one P.M., members present were Monica Keever, Dan Ross, Bill O'Rourke, and myself. I have number one liquor permits. Notice was received from Ohio Division of Liquor Control notifying council that building eighty-five sixteen L.P. doing businesses High Miler twenty-two thirty-six, six hundred cells, and Dusty Avenue, holder of an N-type liquor permit, is changing its name to High Miler twenty-two twenty-five, and that council must notify the agency if it requests a hearing on the permit. In addition, a notice was received from the same agency that all permits to sell alcohol in the city expire on February first, two thousand and eighteen, and council has directed to reject the heading renewals. We made a motion not to request any hearings on either notice, the second by O'Rourke, motion passed by voice vote, and I don't have those before full council. Like the recesses of Health and Safety Committee at six oh three P.M.
Okay, any questions or comments? We do need a motion then from full council to not request any hearing on the permit for the High Miler or for any of the renewals for two thousand and eighteen for the rest of the city's land or licenses. Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. McKieber. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, so there will be no requests there. Thank you, moving on. Service, Mr. O'Rourke.
The Service Committee, met on Thursday, December seventh, at, members of the committee are Dan Warboll, Dan Ross, Bill O'Rourke, and Bruce Trucco. Members present were Dan Warboll, Dan Ross, and Bill O'Rourke, acting chair. Item one, was called over at six oh three P.M. And once the sewer rates, the city has been accepted for four million, thirty-year zero interest loan from the Ohio V P A for federally mandated sewer improvements. But the H's, you need to know that the city will have the ability to pay the loan back required of sewer rate increase of ten percent. So, the city has no any negative sewer balances. Rates were raised by three percent in August two thousand and seventeen, and council members Steve Piper asked whether the rate should be raised a further seven percent as of January first, two thousand and eighteen, instead of the ten percent. That was legislated by ordinance forty-seven dash two thousand and seventeen, which was passed on October third, two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Piper had further questions regarding the table of rate increases published in the ordinance. Council President Sislove said the matter will be investigated and brought back up to the supplemental meeting. Like recesses, supplemental meeting six oh three P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding this report? Okay, thank you. Moving on to plane years, December seventh.
And Mr. Hill, read this.
The Visarus City Council General Regular Committee meeting of December seventh, Thursday, two thousand and seventeen, Finance Committee met from six fifteen P.M. to seven thirty-two P.M. Members are Steve Piper, Dan Warboll, Monica Sack, and Bill O'Rourke Chair. Members present were Steve Piper, Dan Warboll, Monica Sack, and Bill O'Rourke Chair. Number one, City Council Clerk appointment. Council President Sir Sislove explained that the appointment is the first piece of legislation addressed by council at the beginning of the new two-year council term in January. The clerk serves in conjunction with council for two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. The clerk works on a full-time basis with health insurance, sick leave overtime authorized, while attendance at all regular and special council meetings is mandatory. Love recommended a maximum salary of twenty dollars an hour in two thousand and eighteen and twenty-one dollars an hour in two thousand and nineteen to bring it into line with the salaries of the auditor clerks and the administration assistant. Warboll made a motion to request legislation reappointing Todd J. Hill as council clerk for two thousand and eighteen and nineteen at the recommended salary, with a second by Piper, motion passed by voice vote. Number two, year-end financial adjustments. Auditor George Schiffer said the following appropriation needs to be made. A, from unappropriated two thousand and seventeen crime victims assistance grant funds, seventy cents to the personal services category slash victim advocate item slash two thousand and seventeen crime victims assistance grant fund to balance out the fund for the end of the year. Schiffer said she will put the amount in the two thousand and eighteen budget rather than request and pay for legislation for such a small amount. Schiffer said the following reductions need to be made. A, in general funds slash program one security of persons or property slash police department, ninety thousand dollars in personal services to correct for surplus in retirement lines and in fire departments. grant funds, seventy cents to the personal services category slash victim advocate item slash twenty seventeen crime victims assistance grant fund to balance out the fund for the end of the year. Schiffer said she will put the amount in the twenty eighteen budget rather than request a paper legislation for such a small amount. Schiffer said the following reductions need to be made. A, in general funds slash program one security of persons of property slash police department, ninety thousand dollars, in personal services to correct for surplus in retirement line, and in fire department, twenty thousand dollars in personal services to correct for surplus in insurance line. B, in income tax funds slash income tax, two hundred thousand dollars in transfers to balance out the line for the end of the year. C, in safety forces levy slash police department, one hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred dollars in personal services and fifty thousand dollars in transfers, because revenues came in under estimate, and in fire department, twenty thousand nine hundred dollars in personal services and thirty thousand dollars in transfers for the same reason. D, in airport grants slash airport, five thousand dollars in contractual services and one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in capital outlay because rehab project at the airport cost less than anticipated. E, in twenty seventeen, victims of crime act slash victim advocate, two hundred and one dollars and five cents in personal services to balance out the line for the end of the year. F, in ODNR theater demolition slash lands and buildings, nine thousand two hundred and nine dollars and eighteen cents in capital outlay to balance out the line for the end of the year. G, in OPWC, Mary Crawford and Perry Street storm improvements slash stormwater utility, eighty-five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-eight cents in capital outlay because the project cost came in under the grand amount. H, in new water filtration plant and distribution lines construction slash water filtration, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-one cents in capital outlay because it wasn't spent in twenty seventeen, and in water distribution, thirty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents in capital outlay for the same reason. I, in sewage disposal slash sewers and drains, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in capital outlay because the Plymouth Street project wasn't completed in twenty seventeen. J, in police pension fund slash police pension account, sixty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents in personal services and eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents in contractual services because these amounts were left over following the last pension payment of the year. K, in fire pension funds slash fire pension account, forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-six cents in personal services and eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents in contractual services because these amounts were left over following the last pension payment of the year. Piper made a motion requesting emergency legislation to make the above reductions, with a second by Sack. Motion passed by voice vote. Schiffer said the following transfer needs to be made. A, in the solid waste funds slash solid waste, ten thousand dollars from personal services to contractual services to cover the county landfill expenses. Sack made a motion requesting emergency legislation to make the above transfer, with a second by Warbaugh. Motion passed by voice vote. Schiffer said two advances will need to be made by year's end in the airport and victims of crime act grants. She said figures won't be available until next week, necessitating a special finance committee meeting before the next regular council meeting on December 19. Number three, twenty eighteen budget. The committee discussed budget priorities for two thousand eighteen in the following areas. A, police department vehicle. The department will buy rather than lease a new vehicle at a savings of twelve thousand dollars. B, the fire department has applied for grants to help purchase two must-have items for two thousand eighteen, hoses and nozzles and turnout gear. C, the service safety director will research capital improvements for Almelo Park to be paired with pool repairs for a bond anticipation note with findings to be presented to council after the first of the year. D, the auditor is still waiting on various figures from Arcatis and McKeever and Associates and expects to have them by next week. No decisions were made, and the next special finance committee meeting on the twenty eighteen budget was scheduled for seven p.m. on Tuesday, December 12th, 2017. Number four, Leor recessed the finance committee at seven thirty-two p.m.
Questions or comments regarding this December the 7th Finance Committee meeting? None?
You want to go on?
Bill, yes, you would?
Okay, item four, public participation, there's none. Item five, Leor asked a motion during the joint regular committees, Mr. McKeever, and seconded by Ms. Sack. The joint at seven thirty-two p.m. Motion's passed.
Thank you. Then we have another special finance committee, Tuesday, December the 12th.
The Special Finance Committee met Tuesday, December 12th, 2017. Members of the committee are Steve Piper, Dan Warbaugh, Monica Sack, and Bill Leor, Chair. Members present, Monica Sack, Steve Piper, Dan Warbaugh, and Bill Leor, Chair. Item one, Special Finance Committee meeting was called by Finance Chair Bill Leor and Finance Members Steve Piper and Dan Warbaugh to discuss the two thousand eighteen budget. The meeting was called order by Leor at seven o'clock p.m. Item two, the two thousand eighteen budget. Order George Schiffer detailed figures received from Arcatis says they relate to stormwater expenses for two thousand eighteen. She also noted that all city funds are projected to end two thousand eighteen with balances in the flat, although the safety forces levy fund has a projected year-end balance of just eight thousand seven hundred dollars. Concerns were expressed about the city setting aside money to purchase new water meters and service vehicles when residents' utility bills are climbing to have the fund, have the fund federally mandated stormwater separation project. Mr. Warbaugh made a motion to request legislation establishing an appropriation measure meeting the ordinary expenses of the city for two thousand eighteen, was seconded by Mr. Piper. Council President Love explained that the city's manpower ordinance will also have to be repealed in place of counter-salutary raises being given to civil service commission members and the clerk of the commission in two thousand eighteen budget. Sack made a motion to request legislation repealing and replacing said ordinance, concludes those changes, was seconded by Mr. Warbaugh. Motion passed by voice vote. Sack made a motion during the meeting, was seconded by Mr. Warbaugh. Motion passed by voice vote. Leor during the meeting at seven thirty-seven p.m.
Sentence missing in here. Under the paragraph, "The Warbaugh made a motion to request legislation establishing an appropriation measure meeting the ordinary expenses of the city for two thousand eighteen," with a second by Piper, we need to modify this to say that the motion passed and legislation was requested. Okay? Okay, I need a motion then to amend these finance minutes. Second?
Second.
Someone on the committee? Mr. Piper? All those in favor to amend the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And motion passed. Thank you. December 12th, turn the page. Ucires City Council Ad-Hoc Committee, on council rules and procedure, met on Wednesday, December the 13th, 2017, at four forty-five p.m. The meeting was called order at four forty-five p.m. The ad-hoc committee consists of members Mark McKeever, Dan Warbaugh, Rob Ratliff, and Sislove Chair. Members in attendance were Mark McKeever, Dan Warbaugh, Rob Ratliff, and current Leor Chair. Council rules and procedures. The ad-hoc committee was formed to look at updating rules and procedure as they pertain to citizen participation, council participation, and miscellaneous items. The meeting was called to order by Love at four forty-five p.m. These are the main items. Female citizens will not be asked to remove their hats. Ratliff suggested further elaboration on removal of citizens to maintain order. We're working on that. Visitors will be advised that they can address council for a maximum of three minutes unless prior arrangements have been made. Business attire will not be required of council members for committee meetings at any point during the year. That's for committee meetings. Committee chairs will be asked to submit agenda items, not prepared agendas, for their meetings to the council clerk. The procedure for calling for executive sessions will be streamlined. Correspondence and petitions for regular council meetings shall be received by the council clerk by noon on the preceding Monday. There was discussion of reducing committee membership from four members to three. It was decided, it was discussed to keep the membership at four. Love said changes to meeting agenda protocol are also being considered, and that another ad-hoc committee will be rescheduled after further consideration. Any changes to council's rules and procedures approved by the committee must come to the full council for a vote. And these are always approved during the first meeting of the new year. So you all have copies of what they are. We'll be making the changes and getting those out to you prior to the first meeting of the year. McKeever made a motion to adjourn the meeting, with a second by Warbaugh. Motion passed by voice vote. Love adjourned the meeting at five forty-six p.m. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, committee membership. Why would you not go from four to three? Because if you leave it at an even number and have a tie vote, I mean, we see how well that worked during outdoor seating. I mean, why would you not just avoid that, like, play?
We had a long discussion about it. A lot of different items were brought up about it, and the group didn't feel that it was in the best interest of the city to go to three members.
Why would we have made council members?
As dictated by, uh, Hillary's House Code.
It's not, it's not fine. We haven't made a final decision on it.
What would be the argument for keeping it at four? I mean, just at least since I wasn't advocating.
One was, which Mr. Ratliff couldn't confirm or deny, if two of us were to talk to each other, we could talk to each other. If there's only three members, none of us can talk to each other in public.
Because, you know, two members will consist, be a majority of the committee.
Would not be at four.
Yeah.
If we say four. If we say go to three, then two's a form, so.
Well, I'm not the law director, but I would think that if you can tie a vote and kill something, two would be a form, even if it's four.
There's a gray area that he said. Three definitely, two would violate the.
Why not five? I mean, I'm just getting at, like, an even number, just to eliminate tie votes.
Those will be coming up before council then. We'll have copies of the changes and things, and all council members will have them prior to going into the January second meeting. Okay? The Ucires City Finance Committee met in special session on Tuesday, December the 19th.
The members of committee are Steve Piper, Dan Warbaugh, Monica Sack, and Bill Leor, Chair. Members present, Mr. Sack, Mr. Piper, and Leor, Chair. Warbaugh absent. Item one, Special Finance Committee was called by Leor. And Finance Members Sack, Piper, and Warbaugh discussed year-end advances. Called at six thirty. There were two items on year-end advances, unorganization for the airport grant for eighteen thousand dollars and the two thousand eighteen victim crime act for two thousand six hundred dollars. The authorization approved by Mr. Piper and seconded by Ms. Sack, and was passed by voice vote. Leor asked for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Sack made a motion to adjourn the meeting, and seconded by Mr. Piper, and the meeting was adjourned at six thirty-two p.m.
Okay, questions or comments about the meeting? Number one, Plating Committee?
Special Plating Committee had a meeting December 19th at six forty p.m. Members Mark McKeever, Bill O'Rourke, Steve Piper, and myself. Members present, Monica Sack, Bill Leor, and Steve Piper. Special Plating Committee meeting was called by Chair Monica Sack. Mark McKeever, Bill O'Rourke, and Steve Piper discussed O.D. paving of State Route Ninety-Eight. The matter was proposed first, and the committee handed a brief review. Number one, O.D. paving of State Route Ninety-Eight. Steve made a motion to request legislation to repeal Resolution two sixteen dash two thousand fifteen and put in his place a new resolution with new totals. Bill seconded. All in favor, motion passed. Bill made a motion to adjourn the meeting, with a second by Steve. Motion passed by voice vote. Marco adjourned the meeting at six forty-six p.m.
Questions or comments? Okay. Moving on, service.
The Special Service Committee, December 19th, called to order at six forty-seven p.m. Since there's a lack of forums, only to discuss the sewer rates, and Mr. Piper had questions about the ordinance and that the sewer rate should be based on consumption, not by units, not the, not required, the minimum requirement of units. After some discussion, the discussion was to be continued after the first of the year within the service committee. And the.
You adjourned it.
We adjourned, just adjourned at six fifty-seven p.m.
Questions or comments? Traffic Commission, we have no report from the mayor on that. I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Piper, to accept committee minutes, related committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Report of city officers. From Mayor Reeser, we have a report.
Well, this is signed by both mayor and Service Safety Director Jeff Reiner. Mayor's report, December 19th, 2017. We would like to wish all the citizens of Ucires, and all of you who work here, raise a family here, worship here, volunteer here, all of you who made Ucires special, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We've had a great year, and we look forward to serving you in 2018. Monday, December 25th, on Christmas Day, the city will be closed except for safety forces employees. Monday's trash will be picked up on Tuesday, December 26th, and on Monday, January 1st, Leaders' Day, the city will be closed except for safety forces employees. Monday's trash will be picked up on Tuesday, January 2nd, and that's the report.
Any questions or anything you would like related to the mayor or the service directors?
Drew's hot. You always have something.
No, not always.
Mr. O'Rourke, you hear nothing?
Not at the moment.
Okay, Mr. O'Rourke? Okay. Thank you. Law Director's not with us. He did not leave a report. Before you, this is the auditor's statement of cash position. Oh, we move on to, Schiffer didn't mean to skip you. My eyes went clear down at the bottom of the page, so this is your report, okay? Anything else?
No. I'm just glad we have all this legislation before us tonight, and that the budget is finally finalized. And I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Okay, thank you very much. We also have the auditor's statement of cash position dated November the 30th, 2017. I need a motion to accept and file that report. Second, Mr. O'Rourke? Mr. McKeever?
Yep.
Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to accept and file the auditor's statement of cash position. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. The treasurer has submitted the November treasurer's report. It will be held till the next meeting. It's for you to look it over. His chief is not with us this evening. The fire chief is not with us. I need a motion to accept city officers' reports. Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have visitors' input regarding reports and scanning or special committee, and the city officers, to then wish the council. State your name and address, please.
Kurt Van Khouser, 1675 South Sandusky Avenue. Wanted to comment on the committee for the council rules and procedures, and specifically the time limit of the three-minute for visitors to speak. On the night of November 7th election, Love was quoted in a TF article saying she wants to continue working to update the council rules to allow visitors more opportunities to speak in council. Was that an accurate statement of the telegraph form quoting you?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so why are we now? Were you at this committee trying to say we need to give people less opportunities and time to speak now, or?
We were discussing, we discussed this. We put it in terms of what areas their rules state. We've always given everyone the opportunity to address council, and if it managed to take a little bit more time, we are always willing to give them that time in order to get their point across to council. But we do have to have some rules, some guidelines that we go by.
So.
By the way, I didn't have a vote on that committee. The committee voted, I didn't.
Okay, so are we gonna give more opportunities to speak at the council meetings?
We have three opportunities now. When I first came on council, the opportunities were basically limited to the, I believe, at the very beginning where we had granted permission for visitors to speak. And then when, I think this is the one that was, that we inserted into it. It would have been sometime since two thousand and four, where we, after we accept the city officers' report, we ask for public input there. And then we also ask three times, the third time is right after we do the first reading of all the legislation. We also ask for inflair, for any visitors that would like to speak.
So the committee.
And we've been very relaxed with that. If somebody else has a comment or something that they want to make a long delay, we generally listen to what they have to say.
So was any additional time suggested at the committee meeting last week for an additional opportunity to speak during the council meeting?
We didn't adjust, we didn't address this. This was for what was continued. If you'd listened to the minutes, you would have heard us say that that is going to be brought up at the next meeting of the ad hoc committee. It was not addressed at that first meeting.
Well, I've never seen an issue with the limit, the time limit on the guest speakers, but the scheduled speakers, I've seen them go on for up to forty-five minutes before. And in my opinion, if any time limit needs to be, it's on the scheduled speakers rather than a couple times a year when a guest speaker might go on for ten minutes. Also, how long in advance does a scheduled speaker need to notify that they want to be on the agenda?
We usually like to know by Monday prior to the council meeting. We changed it from Friday to Monday. It's one of the rules and procedures that we had in there that we want to hear, we'd like to hear by Monday at noon, so that we can put it on the schedule and let everybody know there's going to be a special presentation.
So for this meeting tonight, yesterday at noon would have been appropriate?
No, we haven't passed those changes yet.
But if those changes get passed potentially yesterday at noon would be.
Yes, that's what we asked. But we've never kept anyone from speaking because they showed up here and just simply wanted to talk to council.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Moving on, for consideration of proposed legislation for the first time, please bear with us, this is a long one.
We have a fluke piece of legislation, ordinance number fifty-four, twenty seventeen. Amending and supplementing ordinance number fifty, twenty sixteen, being the annual appropriations ordinance for twenty seventeen, by decreasing the current balance in the personal services line item by ten thousand dollars and increasing the current balance in the contractual services line item by ten thousand dollars within the solid waste category, within the solid waste subparagraph, within the solid waste fund, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number fifty-five, twenty seventeen. Amending and supplementing ordinance number fifty, twenty sixteen, being the annual appropriations ordinance for twenty seventeen, by decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item within the police department category by ninety thousand dollars, and in the personal services line item within the fire department category by twenty thousand dollars, afore said line items and categories being within the program one security of persons and properties fund subparagraph. Further, decreasing the current balances in the transfers line item within the income tax category by two hundred thousand dollars within the income tax fund subparagraph. Further, decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by one hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred dollars, and in the transfers line item by fifty thousand dollars, afore said line items being within the police department category, and the personal services line item by twenty thousand nine hundred dollars, and in the transfers line item by thirty thousand dollars, afore said line items being within the fire department category, afore said line items and categories being within the safety forces levy fund subparagraph. Further, decreasing the current balances in the contractual services line item by five thousand dollars, and in the capital outlay line item by one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, afore said line items being within the airport category within the airport grant fund subparagraph. Further, decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item within the victim advocate category by two hundred and one dollars and five cents within the twenty seventeen victims of crime act fund subparagraph. Further, decreasing the current balances in the capital outlay line item within the plans and buildings category by nine thousand two hundred and nine dollars and eighteen cents within the O.D.N.R. theater demolition fund subparagraph. Further, decreasing the current balances in the capital outlay line item within the stormwater utility category by eighty-five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-eight cents within the OPWC Mary Crawford and Perry Streets Storm Reprovements Fund subparagraph. Further, decreasing the current balances in the capital outlay line item within the water filtration category by five hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-one cents, and in the capital outlay line item within the water distribution category by thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, afore said line items and categories being within the new water filtration plant and distribution lines construction fund subparagraph. Further, decreasing the current balances in the capital outlay line item within the sewer and drains category by four hundred and eighty thousand dollars within the sewage disposal fund subparagraph. Further, decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by sixty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, and in the contractual services line item by eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents, afore said line items being within the police pension account category within the police pension fund subparagraph. And finally, decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-six cents, and in the contractual services line item by eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents, afore said line items being within the fire pension account category within the fire pension fund subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number fifty-six, twenty seventeen. Repealing and replacing ordinance number fourteen, twenty seventeen, establishing the compensation in human resources staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of U.S.R., Ohio, and enacting in its place legislation pertaining to the compensation in human resources staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of U.S.R., Ohio, effective through January one, twenty eighteen, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number fifty-seven, twenty seventeen. Establishing an appropriations measure meeting the ordinary expenses of the city of U.S.R., state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December, thirty-one December, twenty eighteen, and declaring an emergency. And finally, resolution number two thirty-four, twenty seventeen. Authorizing and directing the city auditor to advance funds from the general fund in an amount not to exceed ninety-one thousand six hundred dollars to fund outstanding obligation of the following grants. Two thousand six hundred dollars to fund the twenty eighteen victims of crime act fund subparagraph, and eighty-nine thousand dollars to fund airport grant fund subparagraph. These funds will be returned to the general fund in twenty eighteen as grant funds are received. This amount may be reduced by the auditor if grant funds already requested for reimbursement are received by year end and declared an emergency.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this as the first reading of legislation.
So moved.
Mr. R., second?
Second.
Ms. Sack? I have a motion of Mr. R., seconded by Ms. Sack to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number fifty-four dash twenty seventeen goes to finance. Ordinance fifty-five, twenty seventeen goes to finance. Ordinance fifty-six, twenty seventeen goes to finance. Ordinance fifty-seven, twenty seventeen goes to finance. And resolution two thirty-four dash twenty seventeen goes to the finance committee. This is where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. No one? Do we need a recess? No? Committee reports on pending legislation. Finance committee?
Finance committee's favor ordinance fifty-four dash two thousand and seventeen, the year-end transfer. Finance's favor ordinance fifty-five dash two thousand and seventeen, year-end reductions. Finance's favor ordinance fifty-six dash two thousand and seventeen, employee manpower. Finance's favor ordinance fifty-seven dash two thousand and seventeen, the two thousand and eighteen budget. And finance's favor, resolution two thirty-four dash two thousand and seventeen, year-end advances.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, seconded by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number fifty-four dash twenty seventeen, do I hear, which is the year-end transfer, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca? Ordinance number fifty-four, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number fifty-four dash twenty seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Piper?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca? Sack?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-four dash twenty seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance fifty-five dash twenty seventeen, which are the year-end reductions, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca? O'Rourke?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-five, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number fifty-five dash twenty seventeen?
So moved. Second.
Piper?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca? Sack?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-five dash twenty seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number fifty-six dash twenty seventeen, which is the employing manpower, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca? O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-six, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number fifty-six dash twenty seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca?
Ordinance number fifty-six dash twenty seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number fifty-seven dash twenty seventeen, which is the two thousand and eighteen budget, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca? Ordinance number fifty-seven, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number fifty-seven dash twenty seventeen?
So moved. Second.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca? Sack?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-seven dash twenty seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed resolution number two thirty-four dash force twenty seventeen, which are the year-end advances, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca? Sack?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirty-four, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number two, I'm sorry, proposed resolution two thirty-four dash twenty seventeen?
So moved. Second.
Piper?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball? Trucca? Sack?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirty-four dash twenty seventeen is duly adopted. Thank you. Okay, we already voted on no hearing for the, from Health and Safety for the liquor permit, so that's taken care of. Anyone else with any little business they'd like to bring up at this time? Okay, under new and miscellaneous business, Monday, December the twenty-fifth, the city offices are closed for Christmas. The swearing-in of council members, council president, city treasurer is December the twenty-eighth at seven P.M. Year-end council chambers. Monday, January the first, twenty eighteen, the city offices are closed for New Year's Day. And Monday, January the fifteenth, the city offices will be open for Martin Luther King Day. We need a motion to accept our two council members that are absent this evening, Mr. Trucca and Mr. Wireball. Who's that, I'm sorry?
Over. Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, seconded by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor of excusing council members who are absent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We don't really have any referral, do we have a referral this evening?
We had one from the mayor to the plating committee for the Route twenty-eight paving legislation.
Route ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, Route ninety-eight. We discussed it in the special plating meeting, request of legislation for the meeting of January second. No other referral.
Okay.